Service Committee, August 8th, 2024. Due to a lack of quorum, there will be no Service Committee meeting tonight. Public Lands and Buildings Committee, August 8th, 2024. Due to a lack of quorum, the Public Lands and Buildings Committee will not meet tonight. Health and Safety Committee, August 8th, 2024.
I call the Health and Safety Committee meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Members present are Kevin Myers, James Mee, and myself, Vicki Deshaun as chair. Absent is C. Aaron Sherrick. First, we'll have public participation. Anyone wishing to speak to the Health and Safety Committee may come to the podium, state their name and address, and talk.
And here I am again.
Hi Darla.
Hi, I'm Darla Lewis, 600 Kaler Avenue. Most of you already know me because I've been here about the ordinance 505. Okay, so first what Mrs. Deshaun stated at your meeting at July 25th. I am no longer the administrator for the trap neuter return program. I handed that program under a very capable woman, Susan Fritz. However, I want to explain that I will still be representing the program until the ordinance passes. Okay. I'd like to thank you all again for the wonderful job that you have done with this ordinance and including the trap neuter return. So it was, I'm sorry, I have to read, I'm not good at memory. It was brought to my attention that at the July 25th meeting, Victoria Caldwell from the Crawford County Humane Society came and spoke with you about this ordinance, including what was in there about the TNR program. Now, I have no idea why Ms. Caldwell brought it upon herself to talk with you specifically about our program. When I started this program in March, I contacted Ms. Caldwell and offered her to become part of our program. Ms. Caldwell had no interest in the TNR program and let that be known to me. I would like to point out that most TNR programs are associated with their local humane societies and work in partnership with them. Ms. Caldwell spoke about the TNR program being irresponsible for not having an ordinance about testing for cats for feline leukemia and AIDS. Trap neuter return programs are that. They help control the population of stray feral cats in our community. They are not in the business of making sure these cats are vaccinated for feline leukemia or AIDS. ORC does not require that a cat be given a rabies shot, however, the TNR is implementing this vaccine. Ms. Caldwell deals with domesticated animals. The TNR deals with cats that are stray and feral and have no home. I did some research of our local vets to find out how many positive cats with feline leukemia and AIDS have come into their facility. Erica Sheba reported three cats in a year, and Whitestone Vets reported one in 50. These are low numbers for our community. A feline leukemia and AIDS test costs approximately $60. Now, along with the cost of $70 for a spay for female and $40 for male neuter, a TNR program that has only been in effect for five months could not absorb these costs at this time, nor can the TNR program afford to have a cat euthanized if it is positive and/or pay for the disposal of the body. I did speak with Susan Fritz, and she's planning on this program being in full swing sometime next year. With the addition of grant monies into their funds, she does see a later time when feline testing could be done along with the cost of spays and neuters. The program is just not there at the present time. When the Humane Society of Crawford County gets a cat and that has tested positive for one of these diseases, they immediately euthanize that cat. TNR is getting the population, is about getting the population under control and not euthanasia. I might add that if a cat tests positive for either of these diseases, that cat has a possibility of living with the proper treatments even though they might only live two to three more years. For example, a colony of cats with leukemia can be centralized in one area and be able to live their life out without being euthanized. Feline leukemia is spread through bite wounds from an infected mother to her kittens during mutual grooming, and this is rare, but sometimes through a shared litter box or feeding dishes. Feline AIDS is only passed through biting. Only 18% of cats with feline AIDS die within six years. The rest can live long lives with only periodically experiencing illness. Ms. Caldwell talked about the traps and how soon they should be checked. TNR is usually onsite during the entire trapping time, and if not, they are checked at least twice a day. I think it's only required once, but we would not do that. We're not going to leave a cat in a cage for a long period of time after being trapped. She also, Ms. Caldwell, also addressed the issue of people who feed the stray and feral cats in their area. I did not believe that any community can control this. With the TNR program, the population will eventually be decreased, thus there will be less people who feed. Lastly, I'm here to request the Health and Safety Committee continue with the process of putting the ordinance 505 into effect without any changes to the TNR program section. Thank you very much. Do you have any questions?
I don't.
No?
I will say that I spoke with Linda Cooper-Reiter.
Yes.
And she and Susan Fritz are coming to our Health and Safety Committee meeting on August 22nd to talk.
Yes.
About the TNR program as well.
Yes. Yeah, Susan told me she was.
We're a whole other business in committee.
Well, that's what I'm thinking. We would like to hear what Susan and Linda have to say before we...
Yeah, I asked Susan if she could come with me tonight, and unfortunately, they started the Lincoln Highway byway garage sales, so she couldn't come with me. But I told her that I definitely wanted to be here and address these issues.
Sure.
And so after you speak with her, then you'll let me know if you have to do any more changes to the TNR program?
Well, you're more than welcome to come to the August 22nd meeting if you wanted to, to hear.
Sure.
You know Susan and Linda, but if you're not able, yes, I will let, I will keep you apprised as to what's going on.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay. Question, Darla.
Yes.
Is it possible for us to have a copy of what you read there? Great. I will see that you get that back.
Oh, I have it on my computer.
Oh, wonderful. I'm thinking this might help Miranda when she's preparing the minutes. Thank you so much.
I read that quickly.
Thank you.
So, thank you all very much again. I'm very excited, so I know you guys will do the right thing.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, next on the agenda, oh, I guess I should ask, any more public participation? Okay, seeing no one. We have approval of minutes for the July 25th, 2024 Regular Health and Safety Committee meeting. May I have a motion to approve those minutes? I'm assuming no one has any questions? We're fine?
Second.
Second. Motion by Myers, second by me. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next was the trap neuter return. We've had our talk here with Darla, and as I indicated, Susan Fritz and Linda Cooper-Reiter are going to be here on August 22nd to talk as well, so I think we can move on unless anybody has anything they would like to say about. Okay. Next, the marijuana dispensaries. I believe it was at the Tuesday council meeting, Carolyn, was it not, that you passed out, Mrs. Shireman had passed out, I believe, to all council, a document that talks about the pros and cons for having a marijuana... I don't know how to pronounce that word. Dis... Distery...
Dispensary.
No, it's, no, it's...
Dispensary.
D-I-S.
Distillery.
Distery...
Distillery.
There's no L in there.
Dispensary.
Okay, then it's wrong in this.
Yeah, that's the same.
All right, marijuana dispensary. Four, in a small town. I will be honest, and I hate to admit, I've not had a time to, I've not had time to read all of this, Carolyn. Has anybody else had an opportunity to look this over? And I know at our last meeting, Mike O'Keefe was going to do some checking as well, but I haven't heard anything from him, and he said if he had any information, he would bring it tonight, because I asked if I should put this on the agenda, and he said go ahead and do that. So if he had information, it'd be on, but he's not here, so...
I've been talking to him about location as far as Plating and most everything. If we do decide to go forward with it, it would be on the north end, up by the industrial park.
You know, the cons, if we could just kind of, just go off of those for a quick second. You know, somebody made mention the other night, it doesn't matter what we're talking about, if it's this topic or another topic, there's going to be opposition to damn near everything we do. The problem with that is, is the people that would be upset by that are the same people that would be upset that we're not doing enough to bring revenue into the city. You know, we're darned if we do, darned if we don't, you know. You know, when we were growing up, when I was younger, I remember people saying, "Oh, marijuana's the gateway drug to this and that." I just, from the research I've done and the schooling I've done, that's not true. I don't believe that that's true. And we're seeing it being legalized everywhere around us. We've got, we've got the left hand or right hand to decide here. We can decide to throw our hat in the ring and try to get some revenue into our community, or we can not. And I'm for bringing the revenue into the community. I know there's, like Jim alluded to, there's going to be rules, there's going to be places that can and can't go. I get all that, and I think that we need to make sure we stay ahead of it and do the right thing, and then allow the opportunity for income and jobs in our community.
Okay. Jim?
The industrial park's a perfect place for it, if we're going to have it, because we could have a grow house, they could have a lab, and they could have a dispensary, all up there. We have the state police within a half a mile away, we have the sheriff within a mile away, we have BSR's police department within a mile away. I mean, as far as security, we're covered in every direction, so...
But we aren't doing anything tonight, we're...
I don't know what...
Oh, okay.
What is our next step? What do we have to do? I guess it may be a question for Mr. Gerner, what's required of us, what are the steps we need to look at so that we can have this option?
So currently, there's nothing that prohibits it, so currently, if they wanted to, they could.
Okay.
I haven't spent as much time in the Ohio Administrative Code pertaining to regulations and licensure and all that stuff, but I don't, I mean, it's not prohibited, so I think it would be permissive at this point.
Maybe in your conversations with Mr. O'Keefe, you could get his input as to, you know, if there's any zoning changes we need to look at or anything that, not only to allow it in some areas, as it, you know, already is, I reckon, but to prohibit it in areas that we don't want it in.
Well, in the Ohio Administrative Code prohibits it within 500 feet of parks, schools...
500 feet of schools, churches.
Churches. Churches, everywhere, other than industrial park.
So the downtown area is pretty much out.
Yeah.
Right. Which I sort of agree with.
Right.
I want the revenue, but I want to keep it.
Yeah, absolutely. Maybe a conversation with the partnership as well, just to let them know our thoughts and eventual intentions, so that as, you know, I'm sure that if there is a company that's looking to grow and move into an area, that they're going to be, they might hear about it before anybody else does.
So this is the wrong opportunity, but did anybody take Dave's place now, or...
Not yet.
Okay. I didn't hear that.
So you're going to do some more discussion with Mr. Keefe?
Yes.
I'll take the initiative to speak to the partnership.
Okay.
Perfect.
And then the law director?
We'll follow up and, yeah.
And Vicki's just saying you do this?
Yeah, I will make sure if there's any regulations or anything that we have to comply with.
All right, thank you. Next, food trucks. And on the food trucks, I guess I was hoping that Mike was going to be here again tonight because he had given us a document that talks about food truck suggestions. And let's see, the mayor's report on Tuesday was on the food trucks. The zoning office at the administration have received inquiries about food trucks. Currently in the zone, currently in the zoning code, there are no rules or regulations for food trucks. And that's then when they refer the matter to both the Health and Safety and the Plating Committee to consider establishing rules and regulations. And again, we were provided food truck suggestions.
You know, I'm not always super hip on having more government oversight, more regulations, more permits, but in this instance, we've got trucks that could be coming from anywhere that'll set up, and there's no taxes being collected, they've occupied parking spaces for six, eight, 10 hours, which is all, I think, okay if it's done properly, and then somebody's got some oversight on that. I had mentioned to you the other evening, the city of Delaware has a good program that we probably could reach out to them and get some copies of things. So if you own a food truck, you might need to obtain a permit. There's several things that we want to make sure, we want to make sure they're properly insured, we want to make sure that they have passed a health department inspection, whether it be in their home county or our county, those types of things, just for the general safety of everybody, and then lastly, making sure that the appropriate taxes are being collected rightfully.
Jim?
So Delaware has a legislation?
I don't know if they have legislation, but they have a permitting process that I'm familiar with, so it's...
Could Mr. Gerner check, see about that legislation? I'd like to look at it.
I know that Fire Chief Schwemli had supplied me back on July the 8th with a copy of City of Fostoria, Ohio, their ordinance dealing with mobile food vendors or units, as they call them, and it talks about their regulations for, you know, someone to come in and set up their food truck and what have you. I'd be happy to give you a copy of that, Mr. Gerner.
Could you email that to us too?
Pardon?
Email.
Oh, sure can, yes, yes. And I'm sorry that I didn't think about having that placed in our documents on demand. Me bad on that, but I'll see that you, that you guys get a copy of that. Yes.
First of all, I did this, didn't know what for.
Okay.
That's a copy that you can send to...
My name's Greg White, I'm 1125 Hillcrest Drive. I did some research on this, looking at, because of my background in the fire service. So I did some research with the state fire marshal, the city of Toledo, because I do have a friend up there in the city of Toledo that inspects food trucks. And I couldn't get a phone call to him today, but I will be probably talking to him tomorrow. The state fire marshal has a, under the high-rise code, and you have a copy of it, this is summary, has regulations on food trucks, okay? The city of Toledo and in that packet also has a permit in that packet that they, people have to fill out, and it's only good for so long. They also have to have inspection on their flexible lines running from their, how do I want to say this, source of gas, okay? Generators are in there too, okay? They have to be so many feet from a building, they have to be 10 feet spacing, and if the building has an awning on it, it has to be 10 feet from that awning out. Also in there too, and you can look at it, there has to be three foot spacing between one food vendor to the next food vendor. These are changes that were made that came up in the last two sessions of the state fire marshal's office that changed some regulations in there, okay? To allow local code officials or having jurisdiction authority to change that, but the fire marshal decided to change it as is written, there are changes. Some of the things on here I was looking at, one of the things is that there is no reason, there in a lot of cities, there's no restriction on how many times they can set up per year, because basically what it is, is you're denying them a business opportunity. However, you can set regulations on it, and you can require a fee and a permit to be within your city limits. Some of the other thing is parking access, you can restrict that, utilities, it's all in the code, in the high-rise code. Going back to, he had in here also, you guys, that's your, you know, city thing can do the, no sitting or permitting on city sidewalks. One of the questions that I came up, and I cannot find this in any code, and I called somebody else who works for the state fire marshal's office, a friend of mine, but there is no restriction on residential use, okay? A lot of people like to have a food truck come out to a party or whatever in their neighborhood, so you, technically, unless you make an ordinance, I think that would be in the bad area of wanting to go to.
In case of an auction.
An auction, okay, anything like this, because that is considered a food truck. Anything. A trailer, a van, a U-Haul, okay? Anything that they serve food out of that has a generator or gas supply lines to it is considered a food truck under this state law, under the high-rise code section. And I gave you everything. If you need more, let me know, I have it all, I have it all. But I think that's one of the things that I was kind of against about letting, you're going to not allow Mark's Ice Cream to go into a neighborhood during a party because they have a generator to serve ice cream to people at a party?
We don't know yet, that's why we're having this discussion.
That's what I'm saying. When you restrict trade, that's another thing, and Mr. Gerner just got a look at me and said, "Yeah, you're right." You don't want to, I don't think you want to go there to restrict some...
I think we want to make it as easy as we can, as...
Well, that's what I'm saying.
As they're all following the same guidelines, so that...
Yeah, but the state fire marshal's rules on food trucks is pretty specific, and it's to the point, and there's certain things in there about, you have to have a sign, you know, for LP tanks or whatever you use, and it has to be visible 25 feet from, in all directions, you can't have smoking within a certain, you know, perimeter of the source of your gas, okay? That's all spelled out in there. So I kind of did some research for you and I brought it in.
Thank you.
Like I said, if you have anything else, I'd be more than willing to help you guys out because this is my area of expertise.
So given your background, how, do they have a once-a-year inspection?
Yeah, city of Toledo, I missed it this year. I got invited, but I missed it. City of Toledo, okay, because they have 576 food trucks registered in what is called the Lucas County, okay, city of Toledo and all the surrounding departments. They set up three different days up there where they have an indoor building, the people drive their food trucks in, and they have an inspection, what do you would call it? Basically a drive-through, and everybody has to have all their paperwork filled out. They have to have their lines inspected, and each time, and if you read the law, each time a food vendor sets up, and I put the permit in there too, the thing, they have to have their lines tested each and every time that they set up.
So...
Yeah, it's, you know, that's why a lot of them are going to other...
A question to the committee, do we have it inspected here, or is Toledo's inspection good enough?
Well, that's the thing, not all cities have, now, I know Cleveland does, but, I mean, I know lots of cities do not have what they call as a yearly inspection, because in Toledo, they actually have the Lucas County Health Department also onsite, and all the inspections are done at one time, and they're issued a one-year license from there. So that's, you know, because on any given day in city of Toledo, there could be anywhere in the neighborhood of two, 100 to 200 food trucks setting up inside the city limits of Toledo, which is a very big city, but basically, that's why they have the rules and regulations and the permit process and how they do everything is, is really streamlined to get people in, get them registered, get them checked, and stuff like this. And they're also acceptable to spot checks, as according to the Ohio high-rise code under the state fire marshal's office for food trucks.
I think one of the things we could do potentially, check with the fire department, but it's similar when we have the Browers Festival. The fire department goes around to every food stand and booth and does an inspection, and they're looking for the safety things. They're not looking for food safety, the health department does that. So in this instance, I think we might potentially say that, you know, for the limited number that we're going to have, the same way when you want to buy a golf cart, you bring it here and let the police department inspect it, you can do the same thing, take your food trailer to the fire department, get it inspected, that's a potential way to do that.
Okay. This is...
Post-to-lead charges of... A $50 fee.
Yeah. And I think that could all be part of the application.
Yeah, it's all part of the application.
You get a sticker at the end of the day when everything's inspected.
But like I said, the permit paperwork I gave to Vicki is all in there, and NFPA has a safety thing on what to look for, they have to have carbon dioxide detectors in there, and certain things have to be certain ways. All right, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it, Greg. So I will scan what Mr. White gave me along with the city of Fostoria's ordinance, I'll scan that, send it to Miranda, and then she can send it to the committee members. Does any, you want to talk anymore on?
I don't think, yeah, I mean, I think that's a good start.
Okay, next. Now, on our agenda, it states sex offenders in areas where children reside, and I believe back on July 25th, Mrs. Slater had indicated that she would like that maybe changed to state sex offenders in spaces for children and families. That more encompass what we were talking about, because sex offenders in areas where children reside, so...
I think parks and playgrounds and that kind of stuff was, I think, the general consensus was.
Correct. And I know the last time we spoke, although that we don't have anything stated here, so maybe, oh, yes, we do. You were looking at drafting...
Yes.
Something for us to look at, and then add to, take away, what have you.
True.
So I'm assuming you have that on your agenda?
Yes.
Thank you. Clarissa, did you want to talk any about this particular topic?
Just, I'm waiting on...
Okay. Anybody else?
I think that's good.
Okay, let's see then, next on the list, open projects. Anybody want to discuss anything on open projects?
From me.
Next, public participation again.
Clarissa Slater, 3625 State Route 4. I was watching on Facebook, so if I, if you guys talked about this and I missed it with the food trucks, but I saw it said like only allowed for a certain amount of time was like one of the proposed things in the zone.
What are we back on now here, Clarissa?
Food trucks, sorry.
Food trucks, okay.
Yeah. I wasn't sure if I should have walked up behind Greg White or not, but where it says time limits, limits for a number of days in a calendar year.
Yes, I know in the document, are you looking at the document that was prepared by...
Yeah, those are suggestions for Mr. Keefe.
You're right, and time limits here, Mr. Keefe has stated, a food truck slash trailer can only be located within the city limits for, and then he has a blank for us to fill in, days in a calendar year. These were just suggestions that he had?
Right.
So of course, this would be something that the committee would be talking about. Did you...
Yeah, I just had a, I know we're, I'm probably looking at something that's like now, say an exemption, but a one-off, but I can't remember the name of it right next to Medicine Shop?
Hibbys.
Yeah, they own that property?
Yeah.
I just didn't know if that would affect them since it's their property, or we're just talking about like on the road. just talking about like on the road or on like public sidewalks.
It shouldn't be, in my opinion. I, I will say though, to your point, I may, Vicki.
Sure.
Similar to what Mr. White said, I don't think our goal is to restrict anything. I would like to see personally, you know, if you own a food truck, I'd like to see you go through the permitting process, you get your permit. And if you wanna set up 365 different days in 365 different places in town, God love you, come on in. I, I think that's what we're looking to do. It's not that we wanna say, well, you can only come here five times and after that you gotta go find another town to feed. That, to me, that doesn't seem right.
Okay. Yeah, I was just curious, I was thinking about that when I was listening to you guys on the way.
I wouldn't want you to park your truck, you know, on whatever street and then leave it sit for 365 days. I think it needs to move every day.
Right.
Whether you take it and bring it back or, you know, take up that same parking place where the, you know, street sweeper has to go around in, there's a nice grease spot around there. That's not cool either, but...
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Phil Schahanowitz, 310 South Spring Street, just over there. So just started becoming informed about this, I guess you call it 503 or 505, we're doing animal control. So I've just skimmed this draft tonight, so I may not be up to speed. I wanna first ask before I forget, is, is this imminent or what is the timetable for this or how many other review sessions are there?
We're waiting on further information and haven't made any decisions as of yet.
Okay. Is there a timeframe for it to be completed?
At the speed of government, if I can say that tongue-in-cheek.
Very good. Thank you very much. All right. So offhand thoughts, which some of these may have holes in them because I haven't, you know, I don't know, I'm not up to speed. I guess the first thing is the definition of feral cat here, just jumped out at me. First thing is unsocialized to humans. It seems to me this definition of feral cat is unworkable entirely. I wouldn't know what to do or how to implement feral cat with regard to this. I can look at any cat and say, this cat doesn't like me and I have a problem, it has a problem with me. So I don't know how that would be implemented with regard to any section in here. Seems to me that's a basic problem, or at least at this point, I do not understand how that is meaningful to somebody who actually has to decide, is this or is this not a feral Another observation is, I have at least a dozen wild cats, nuisance cats in my yard. They're not mine, they're from neighbors, they're being fed, whatever. I have a huge problem, these are nuisance cats. They're hunting, eating, defecating, screwing, birthing in my yard. Those are the five things I consider to be nuisances. I think the ordinances here have to be more, a little bit more specific about what you mean about being a nuisance, cause I don't see much in here about what nuisance means other than kind of subjective. But I certainly know what it means to me because I have piles of stuff that stink and smell in my yard just from two days ago. Now, on that thought is, one of the neighbors has some dead cats and they are burying the dead cats in their yard. The yard is a rental property, so they're actually renters burying cats in a property that's not theirs. Now, maybe there's something else in ordinances, I'm not here to really complain about that. I, at that point, I am, I really wanna bring that to your attention because I'm not quite sure how this applies to that or what ordinances pertain to something like that. But you have such a cat problem that folks believe it's okay to dispose of the cat the way they see fit in a yard that isn't theirs. And that may or may not be of concern to you. Let's see, offhand, I see this as a problem with, you know, we call, may call it a cat problem, animal problem, control problem, but it is a human behavior problem, a human judgment problem that folks who have a lot of cats, who aren't taking care of them, think it's okay for them to be in my yard, being a nuisance. And that I don't see again being addressed by this and I may not understand where that part of it is addressed. I see that Chief of Police and/or Safety Director now become involved in this. I don't know if that entirely then rests with them to make judgments about who, who is or who is not violating this nuisance problem and deciding that they can have animals in my yard. But I don't quite see where this ordinance itself starts changing the human behavior part of this that just says, I can let my cats out at night and it's okay wherever they go, even if it's in Phil's yard.
Have you looked at 505.06, which talks about nuisance conditions prohibited?
As I said, no, I have not, probably, I skimmed all of this. I see 506 nuisance condition prohibited, yes, fine.
Cause it talks about any animal which scratches, digs, urinates or defecates upon any lawn, tree, shrub, plant, building or school ground or any other public or private property other than that of the owner or person in charge or control of such animal is hereby declared to be a nuisance and whoever violates this section is guilty of a minor misdemeanor, which I'm sure that means the...
The owner, not the cat?
The owner of the cat is guilty of a minor misdemeanor. So I'm thinking, you know, does this help you a little and...
I've read that and I, I guess that is my point. What you've said there, reading that whole thing is my point, is there is a huge gap, in my opinion, between what those things are and now how do you identify the human whose behavior we want to change? So, the owner of the cat, where, who knows who the owner of this cat is? I've had enough experience where if a cat's behaving, the person says, well, that's not my cat, even though it is. So I think what you've said is exactly correct. I mean, I appreciate that, that the nuisance, there's a penalty, there's no way you can implement this to go from the cat to the owner and maybe three strikes, you're out, you know, to impose greater sanctions if, that's another point, by the way, is I think besides just the first time, you know, two strikes, there's a greater penalty, three strikes, there's more of a cost, something needs to happen to change the person, the owner's judgment. And that's not happening now. Offhand, I don't, I don't, I'm not just, I reckon, you've got a dog warden, you need a cat warden, you need licenses, you need some sort of accountability and traceability. And those are my offhand thoughts for this evening, so thank you very much. If you have any questions for me.
Back to your question on how soon...
Yes.
We were going to be implement, implementing, well, I can't speak tonight. I believe Mrs. Lewis indicated that it's gonna be next year before the TNR program even gets going. And this particular chapter not only deals with the TNR, but it also deals just with, I'll say, regular cats and dogs and what have you. When we finally have a draft that we feel we want to present to council...
Okay.
It will not be an emergency piece of legislation, which means there will be three separate readings given to it. So, when the first reading is done, and I mean, I'll be happy to make a note whenever the time comes to let you know.
Right.
And then first reading, then that gives the public time to come and say, hey, you know, we're not happy or whatever. Then we have a second reading. So there's three times, other than just our normal health and safety committee meetings that, you know, we're talking about this, which again, I'll be happy to keep you in the loop on how this goes. And if you'll remember, August 22nd, we are gonna have Susan Fritz and Linda Cooper Ryder, who are with the TNR program, come and speak as well. You know, if you would be interested in hearing what maybe they have to say, yes, here at our health and safety committee meeting.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
At 6 o'clock is when we start the meetings and then you sit and wait for your particular committee that you wish to come up and speak at.
We can do that.
But, and you can call me anytime.
Thank you.
Phone number and emails on the city website.
Okay.
So...
Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Ray Thadoff, 210 Ethel Street, had a quick comment about the marijuana dispensaries. I feel that if council does not fast-track some kinda ordinances as fast as possible, we're gonna miss out on what could be a huge opportunity. And if we don't do it, the next town over's gonna do it. And I have a feeling that they may have already started their process on their ordinances, so, but I feel also that we should check in to see what taxes Bussaras will get out of that. If it's not worth it, then maybe that's not something we wanna do. I like the idea of the industrial park. Like I said, as long as we get some tax revenue out of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
Ray, to your point, not only just the tax revenue from the sale, but, you know, years ago, people were driving up to Michigan. It's no secret.
They still are.
Yeah, and they, yeah. So, and I may or may not know, some people that did that have shared their experience with me, that they're, they're buying food, they're buying gas, some of them are getting hotel rooms, you know, for the length of their trip. So it's not just the economic impact of the sale of marijuana, it's the economic impact of people coming to our community, spending time in our community, spending other money in our community. So it's bigger than just that. So I think that's important that we know that.
If you look back, we have alcohol sales every other block, it sounds like in Bussaras. And, you know, back during prohibition, you know, alcohol was terrible, so...
You had to go to the crazy fox to get it back then, right?
Yeah. Get down in the basement.
And that was the point I made the other night when we discussed it. I said, you know, it's not for everybody.
Right.
Personally, I, I don't like it, but I also don't like not having jobs and income in the community. So I think we need to look at the bigger picture and realize that times change and then we either, we go with them or we go against them and, you know, like you said...
You could go on the pros and cons.
It's gonna happen somewhere else if it doesn't happen there.
The health benefits, the, you know, the alcohol against marijuana kinda thing, but I think right now, at least pass some ordinances so we can be ready, be ahead of the other guy. Like I said, to get that income in here, get that tax revenue in here.
I agree with you wholeheartedly.
Get some jobs in here, new business. And Route 30, Route 4, I think would be a, a nice place for that type of thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Then I move to adjourn the Health and Safety Committee meeting at 6:43 PM.
Economic Development Committee, August 8th, 2024.
I call the Economic Development Committee meeting to order at 6:44 PM. Members present are Carolyn Shireman, Christopher Maritz and myself as acting, what am I, co-chair or not, co-chair?
Chairperson.
Chairperson. And absent is Zion Hickman. First off, we have public participation. If anyone wishes to speak to the Economic Development Committee, please come to the podium and state your name and address. Next on the agenda, we have the approval of minutes from July 11th, 2024 and from July 25th, 2024. And those I have a problem. The fact that we didn't have any meetings due to a lack of quorum, we don't have minutes to approve, so...
Right.
That's nothing.
No, no official meeting.
Correct.
There'd be no minutes.
Okie doke. Next on the agenda is the Joint Economic Development District, also known as JED. Back on July the 8th, the Economic Development Committee Chair, Zion Hickman and myself, we met with David Zach, then President and CEO of the Crawford Partnership, to discuss the JED program. We also discussed the CEDA program, that's the Citizen Entrepreneurial Development Agency. Now, at that time, Mr. Zach discussed about arranging a gathering between our city council, the township representatives and individuals who are efficient in providing information and answering questions about those two programs. In light of Mr. Zach's resignation this week, I spoke with him this morning about this anticipated gathering and I received the following email from him. I have spoken with Sarah Hurley, and if you'll remember, Sarah was here Tuesday night and spoke. She will be facilitating the familiarization and education process. So she's going to take over arranging this gathering. He says the plan is the following. Over the next few months, Sarah will talk to officials from Holmes, Liberty, Bussaras and Whetstone Townships to initiate discussions and gauge their willingness to attend a meeting to learn about different ways the City of Bussaras and the townships could cooperate. And that's in connection with these two programs, the JED and the CEDA. Based on that feedback, she will initiate with Nancy Clutter's help in our office, a meeting with an expert to be able to explain and answer questions about the various options. The next steps will be determined following that meeting. So...
I have a question.
Sure.
How come we weren't notified of the meeting between you and Zion with David Zach?
Well, you know, you had questioned, and I'd have to go back, but you had questioned at one of the meetings, why Zion hadn't done anything and you felt that...
And he wasn't here at that meeting, so I was gonna ask it to be taken off project, open project.
Correct. And at that time, I believe that's when I was stepping in for Miranda, I indicated, you know, I felt we should give him a little more time and the committee said, you know, two weeks, which he got it...
My question is, why weren't we notified that you guys were having that meeting so we had the opportunity to join it?
Because we would've had a quorum or a majority. And so, if, like, let's just say if you would've wanted to have come, there would've been three out of the four committee members and we would've been, correct me if I'm wrong, but in violation of the Ohio Sunshine laws.
But what if one of us, one or one, they wanted to be there? Why didn't Mr. David Zach come here where we could've heard him, all of us?
Well, that's what he then is setting up, or he was going to be setting up, started to, and now Sarah's gonna take over. So there is gonna be a gathering, as I stated...
So we're right back from the very beginning with the JED project. We ain't no farther ahead than we were when it was first brought up, except for you and Zion got to talk to David Zach. So we're no, we're no farther ahead.
Not until Sarah is able to get this gap. Okay. Uh, let's see, do you have anything else to say?
I think this, this part here's ridiculous.
Then finally, at the August 20th, 2024 council meeting, either Chair Hickman or myself will be requesting a referral of the CEDA program to the Economic Development Committee cause right now, the only thing that we've referred is the JED. I didn't even know what a CEDA program was, but when Mr. Zach brought this up, I just wanted to make sure that we wanna have it on the agenda so we're able to discuss, which again, we can discuss without it being on the agenda, but if a decision later on is going to be made, it needs to be on the agenda. So let's get it on the agenda and we will do that at the next council meeting. Okay, next, let me grab here. Oh.
I have one.
Sure.
Can you explain what CEDA is? Can you explain what SEDA is?
All I know is that SEDA stands for Citizen Entrepreneurial, and I know I'm not pronouncing that correctly, Development Agency. It's another type of, well, the JED has to do, do I really know what the JED has to Oh my, this is small print. What is a JED? A JED is a special purpose territorial district created by contract between corporations. It's another type of...
Tax incentive.
Yes, tax incentive.
Creating districts to hopefully spur economic development. And so, so that we're not just creating districts within our own boundaries, we could agree with Holmes Township and Bussaras Township that we could work on this joint project together and split revenues and those types of things. But that's a very...
So then my next question is, was Mr. Zach for JED being in Bussaras or against?
He really didn't say, but he brought up the SEDA.
But I mean JED right now. The SEDA just kind of like was thrown in here.
I think that generally he's for anything that would spur economic development. And there are different programs. We use like the tax incentive review, and then there's a, I can't remember the, it's like TFI or something tax.
TIF.
Some TIF, TIF, which is more about creating, I think, creating housing as opposed to business end of it. But I guess I'm rambling. My point being, I think that Mr. Zach was in favor of all kinds of different mechanisms to create as much growth and development in our community.
Correct.
As possible. And if the JED thing was one of those ways that we can do it, great. If we could do it with the SEDA, great. If we can do it with TIF and Turk, and great.
Well, my understanding is that David Zach is not for JED.
I don't.
So why are we wasting our time in JED?
But unfortunately, he's also leaving, so maybe the future person...
Well, he, this was before while we've been playing ball with JED.
Yeah. I mean, it's something I think that is probably beneficial to at least foster that meeting and sit down with Holmes Township and those types of people and sit and listen, and maybe it doesn't actually work out and we don't move forward with the JED, but we make contacts and move forward with different projects in the future.
Right. But...
Point of order comes.
Yes, yes. I thought it turned out. Well, at least it wasn't the grandchildren wanting to FaceTime. I'm not sure when it is that, oh, yes, when Mr. Zach is going to be leaving. His last day will be Friday, August the 23rd. I'm sure, knowing Mr. Zach, even though he is going to be leaving, that Carolyn, if you wanted to schedule a time between the two of you to talk and ask some of your questions, he'd be more than happy.
I think I will.
Okay, great.
Because I think it'd be good if all council was, knew what was going on instead of just a couple.
And as I indicated, all council will know what is going on.
Well, yeah, well, we didn't know there was a meeting going on.
Because there would have been a violation of the Ohio Sunshine Laws.
I did that. So what if, what if I wanted to go, would you have backed out?
Sure would have.
Okay, well, see, we didn't even have that opportunity.
Okay, then I apologize for that.
That's what I'm trying to get to.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Next, I spoke with Cassie Grau with the Bussaras Tourism and Visitors Bureau today. And in the agreement that we have with the Bussaras Tourism Bureau, it talks about, along with providing their quarterly updates to the city council on how they're spending their funds that they receive through the bed tax collection, which they have been providing those updates or those reports, that if the Economic Development Committee wishes to have her come and talk, and she had asked me if, you know, we would like her to come and talk. And, you know, for the last couple economic development committees, we haven't had meetings because of a lack of quorum, because certain people haven't come. So now that we have a quorum, I just said to Cassie today that I was personally inviting her to come and give a talk on what activities the Tourism Bureau has done and what they're planning on doing. And she was excited and is planning on being here at our August 20th committee meeting to give a brief outline again of what the Tourism Bureau is doing. Does anybody have any questions about open projects?
She's coming on the 20th?
On the 20th.
So that would be a Tuesday full council meeting.
Excuse me, she's coming at a committee meeting.
22nd, yeah.
Oh, it's the 22nd? Let's hope that I wrote August 20th in air here and didn't give her that date, although she looked at her calendar, and I told her Thursday, but I will double check to make sure that we are on the same page for the day. Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, open projects. Anybody from the committee?
I do.
Sure.
I would like to take JED off of open projects.
I don't want to take JED off. I want to give, I would like to give Sarah Hurley the opportunity to set up this gathering. I mean, it may be that after we have the gathering and we've met with the townships, the townships may say, we're not interested in working with the city on either JED or SEDA. And then it's done and over. But that's, that's just me, Jim or Jim, Chris?
I can see the resemblance there, yes. I, we went this far, we might as well see where it finishes at and where it goes from here. I mean, they worked hard to, they've been working on this to get to a certain point. Let's see if they get across the finish line on it, good force or not good force.
So I guess to make it all clear, do we need to, I mean, it's on the open projects list.
Right, so I think that Ms. Shireman made a motion and it sort of died for a lack of second.
Okay. Did you understand what?
Yes, I did, Vicki.
Okay, anything else? Any other public participation? Seeing no one, I will adjourn the Economic Development Committee meeting at 7 o'clock PM.
Plating Committee, August 8th, 2024.
Plating Committee come to order. Aaron Sharpe does not hear. Carolyn Shireman, Vicki DeShawn, James Meachir. Public participation for plating. Seeing none. Approval of the minutes for the July 25th, 2024, regular plating committee meeting.
Would you like to make that motion?
Go ahead.
I move to approve the July 25th, 2024, regular plating committee meeting minutes.
I have a second.
I have a second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Changes to the BCO 1189.03, the general servicing requirements. Mr. Gerner?
So that went to Planning Commission, correct?
It is in the Planning Commission.
I think they had a meeting or are having a meeting. Right, so now the Planning Commission then would report out to council?
It wasn't on the Planning Commission.
Nope.
It wasn't in the agenda.
Well, excuse, no, at the last meeting, we had Mike Keef was going to check into the definition of a single-family residence.
All right, I'm writing that down right now. I'll have an answer for tomorrow.
Yeah, he requested more time to look into that.
Okay. Anything else on 1189.03? Okay, we're moving on to the amendment to the Bussaras codified ordinance to include ponds. You've seen a long list of stuff that needs to be added to it. Pond designation, details to show on plan, design, submittal. So the McKeavers, our engineers, need to sign off on these lists of things here. So somehow do we need to incorporate that into the legislation?
I think that we create in there saying that the engineering department has to sign off on the plans and pursuant to the Ohio Department of Natural Resources or whatever the guidelines.
Okay, now, they're going to have a fee, our peoples are going to have a fee, is that going to be done by finance? Do we need to refer that to finance, or do we do it here?
You mean like a application fee?
Application fee.
Yeah, we can put that in from here. It would not need to come from finance.
Now, at the last meeting, you were going to check with Dylan Wyatt to see if the inclusion of engineering fees and storm water management fees was necessary. I don't know if you had an opportunity to do that or not.
I have not talked, but I will follow up.
Okay. And then just as you indicated at the last meeting, you said you'd throw, or not throw, you would put in another letter into the ordinance that states that there's approval required by the engineering department, and then that engineering department will have a checklist so that we don't have to list each in the ordinance. The ordinance will refer to a, I guess it's the ODNR checklist, and that'll be held by the engineer's office, which then anybody that comes in and wants to do the pond and...
So we'll add it into the legislation.
Correct.
To run this criteria. I talked to Mr. Diebler, and he's getting drawings. The guys came out and looked at it, and so he's getting drawings made up. He's going to turn them into the office, make sure everything's, Mr. Keef's going to go through everything and make sure everything's right, or if they need to change anything on the drawing of the pond.
Okay.
On the engineering aspect of it. Okay?
And so he's going ahead and doing this, knowing that we haven't even...
This is a requirement that he has to do, correct?
Correct. But there, we haven't requested legislation to be presented to council to vote on the pond. I mean, I think it's safe to assume it's going to pass, but, you know, they say when you assume.
That's true.
And, but if he's fine with going ahead and doing preliminary work and expending funds for something that may not even, I'm just pointing that out. But is, you, because I know you know I had started out talking with Mr. Diver and that, and then I think, I just want to make sure you're keeping him in the loop, because I sort of stepped back.
Yeah, I talked to him the day before yesterday.
Okay, wonderful.
Tuesday.
So was this on Planning Commission's agenda or no?
Not yet.
No, because we haven't referred it to Planning Commission, because we aren't...
So as soon as we get that wrote up, we need to get that to the Planning Commission and get the ball rolling on that one.
Because we do have to provide the draft piece of legislation, do we not, to Planning Commission for them to look over and then decide if they're fine with it or if they have any changes to make?
Yes. But with the, the last legislation, we didn't have McKeavers involved, the engineers.
Yeah.
And we have to involve them in that legislation.
Yeah, I do. Yep, we'll get it done.
Okay, cool.
Thank you.
Anything else on the ponds?
Nope.
All right, now we got 316 and 320 East Woodlawn. So he's got to put these three plots together before we can change it to, from AR, Apartment Residential, to an R3, which is Residential 3.
Now, you're asking us or you're telling us?
I'm telling you that he's getting it done.
He is getting it done?
He is getting it done, but we can't change him to R3 until that is done. So McKeavers are six months out. Okay? So we can get this legislation going, get it to the Planning Commission, and keep moving forward. Once he has his survey done, we'll be ready for him. What's your question? I can see it.
I'm reading this flow chart that we were provided Tuesday on rezoning parcels. So you're saying that, I mean, our legislation would be to change from AR to, what is it?
AR to R3, which allows for separated structures.
Okay, so we could go ahead and do that now?
Some of it. It's going to be a bit generic, because they're going to give that parcel either, they will continue to have three parcel numbers or they'll give it a totally new parcel number.
And that'll have to be referred to.
And that's what we refer in the legislation. We're rezoning this parcel from the AR to the R3. So, I mean, we can have it pretty much ready to roll, but just depends.
So what are, we can't move it over until it's one parcel.
So it's going to have to get a new parcel number from what you're, so, I mean, I can type it all up and have it all ready, but I don't know that parcel number until after it's been combined.
But we can't, without a parcel number, we can't kick it over to...
Right.
Okay.
Catch 22.
Excuse me.
Oh, no, you're good.
And you're saying that McKeever and Associates, they're six months out?
Yes.
To do the survey to make it one parcel?
Yes.
So we're looking...
And he could talk, there are other surveyors that might be able to get him in, but McKeever's not the only one.
Maybe.
There's only a few, but...
Well, we all know his wife had surgery, so he's focused on that right now, so...
He's focused on what, Jim?
His wife had surgery.
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
The member?
Yeah. I was thinking of the McKeever and Associates, I'm like, that's...
No, not McKeever. Rather re bond.
Yeah, yeah, I got it.
Okay, so really, you could prepare a draft. But we're going to have to wait until the three lots have been...
Has one parcel number.
Right.
That's right. Food trucks.
I don't think there's any more to discuss. You, did we discuss that in...
Well, it's plating, so where do you want them?
Pardon?
It's plating, so where do you, where would you like the food trucks to be? Down Main Street or...
Oh. And I guess, why is it in plating? Because we're going to be, I'm talking about where we...
You could restrict which...
Got it.
If you didn't want it in the residential neighborhoods or whatever, but, but then you bring up, what about Bob who throws a block party and wants to have Joe's ice cream out front, you know?
Like auction, all big auctions have food trucks.
Oh, the, yeah, the estate sales, but I think it's something... Oh, the, yeah, the estate sales, but I think it's something, we'll review what Mr. White provided and then talk more next time.
We could actually look at a one-day permit for a, an auction or something, or... Okay, move on, open projects. Hey, 905.
Yes.
We don't need that no more.
Well...
Yeah. But you don't need it, but somebody needs to talk about the sidewalks.
Okay.
I know Tuesday at the council meeting, Mr. Gerder, you had spoke about, and correct me if I'm wrong, but per the Ohio Revised Code, the city, or the council, has to be the one to send out letters to homeowners and say, hey, you need to fix your sidewalk and whatever, because we were hoping that we could remove it from council and pass it over to administration, but that is not permitted.
You'd have to pass a resolution of necessity stating that this is, needs fixed.
Now, when we were looking at the Chapter 905, that was, the areas that we wanted to change was to remove council and insert administration. And also, it was brought up, the permit fee charge, you brought that up. Jim?
And that's in 114309 or something? And currently, I don't think there is a permit.
Okay, under Chapter 905 sidewalks, it says, "No person shall construct or repair a sidewalk until he has secured a permit from the Service Safety Director. No charge shall be made for such permit." And that was one of the changes that you had indicated, you felt there should be a charge for the permit.
I don't think it should be a strategy, just like $20 charge, something in line with the regular... So where's that established at?
So if you wanted to change that, you'd have to take out in 905, no charge shall be, and then service is gonna start looking at all of those Title IX stuff, and one of them, the one I did today is 114309, I think, which also says that sidewalks permits don't, there's no fee charge. And I'm not sure, I don't know, I'll talk to the service director and Jeff Dunn and see if there was a reason they wanted no charge on permit fees. I don't know if they thought, well, we're going to force you to undertake an ex, significant expense, so we'll save you 20 bucks on the back end, I don't know.
So it's established in the service, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, if we wanted to change it, it would be easy to change it in there, and then we would just take out that language in there.
Okay, what do you think?
I'm fine with whatever.
Are you fine with 20 bucks or you want zero? Carolyn?
I think 20 bucks is kinda high.
10?
Five.
Five.
Well, if it's free and it's nothing now, go five.
I'll split the difference with you at 10.
Okay, 250.
Let's think about that a little.
All right.
I wanna check with Mike.
Great.
Yeah, let's see what he said, him and Landon, see what they say about...
Yeah, there's a reason it's no charge, but I don't know if that's coming from, I don't know. It just seems weird that we have a chart of 29 different permit fees and that one's none. I assume that somehow, for some reason, there was...
Well, this was passed in 1964.
Yeah, there's that too.
That might explain it.
Can I ask Mr. Er, Mr. Er, what's some of the fee, what's some of the fees, I mean...
Hmm, $2 per foot to cut into the road, to cut a curve, most of them are 20 bucks. Most of them, I think we were changed in the old 1149.03, no, 1143.09, they're all like $10, and they're all now jumping up to 20, but some of them were more significant, like, you have to have a $2,500 deposit on some different things, but, okay. So, no, but I guess generally, it's 20 bucks for, to get a permit to build a porch, it's 20 bucks to get a permit to add on to your house, nah, it might be more than that on that, but...
But it's, that's a longer process, too.
What do you mean?
What I mean, like, to build on a porch than to just get a permit.
Oh, yeah, well, you gotta get the permit to then build the porch, but yeah, but I don't know if it's a longer process to build on a porch or to build new sidewalks, like, I don't know, they're probably both similar.
Okay. What about removal of the property on Lutz Drive? Will we get rid of that?
Not yet.
Okay.
I think that's the one, we're working with the Crawford Parks District, and the new executive director has reached out and asked me where we're at, and so I need to touch base with him to see what, what we gotta do.
Well, we've done our part, in fact, we passed legislation that authorized the transfer of that, in fact, I just spoke with the mayor and Landon Hill and the Service Safety Director today, because I wanted to know what was happening, because I've been checking periodically the Crawford County Engineers website, and Crawford Park District still owns their Lutz Drive, and the City of Bussaras still owns their properties on Cursdeder Road.
So you're looking on the computer?
Mm-hmm.
They're like six months...
Pardon?
No, it's like six months behind.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think they've transferred though either, just...
It might not have, but I know they're really far behind. What about the letter from the Seventh Day Adventist Church, we take that off?
Well, you'll see, it says the committee decided to hold off on, it says the committee decided to hold off a new signs until a decision is made about the existing structure. Yeah, that was... The city has taken down, as you're coming into town, how there would be the signs up, or like the big wooden sign, and then like Kiwanis would have their little sign, and
Right.
they just felt that was sort of, they were deteriorating, some you couldn't read, and so the traffic commission had discussed it, that they would like all those removed, we talked about it, and so they're gone.
Right.
They're down. But then it was talked about, that we would like to then do nice welcome to Bussaras or some type of sign, and then possibly you could go to these businesses, charitable organizations or whatever, and see if maybe they would like to take on the responsibility of, was it maintaining the signs? And then, in lieu of that, they could put one of their own little signs on the big welcome to Bussaras that shows that, hey, we're taking care of.
So you wanna leave it on?
I think we should leave it on.
Okay.
Because now, you know, Seventh Day Adventist Church, they already went ahead and bought their big signs, so...
And I know on a couple of them, they had, they already had signs up on a couple of them, so... Okay.
Yeah, we'll talk a little more on that, because we probably should get back with them and let them know where things are right now, so...
Okay.
I have another open project.
We got?
The 502 Gay Street, the sidewalk repair, you had talked about that Tuesday night. That can be taken off, that's been taken care of.
Agreed.
It's in the process of being repaired, new sidewalks being put in. So, I don't need to worry about that one.
We got rid of one anyway.
Pardon?
We got rid of one.
Yes!
Open projects, any more open projects?
Nope.
Public participation. Meeting adjourned at 7:20.
Finance Committee, August 8th, 2024.
Call the Finance Committee, meeting order at 7:23 PM, members President James, me, Christopher Maritz, Vicky Deschamps, and myself, Chair, public participation. Seeing none, you have before you minutes from the July 25th, 2024 Regular Finance Committee Meeting, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion to improvements, July 25th to 22nd.
Second.
I have a first by Mr. Maritz, a second by Mr. Me, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. A couple of topics are getting pushed back to our meeting on Monday, the purchase of real property is being pushed to Monday, the 2025 OPWC is being pushed to Monday, the 2% out-of-town worker tax credit that Mrs. Deschamps referred, you have some things you wanna say? Did I ask you too fast?
Well, I mean, I referred that so that we had it on our agenda, because what's on our agenda right now is the revocation of that, and I believe what this committee was looking at was to protect it and not revoke it.
Right.
Now, before we go any further, and I've talked both with Chris and with Zion, I had sent an email to the Law Director just asking, because I wanted to make sure that we were doing this properly, and I'll preface it with, I have no problem with Chris, or no problem with Zion, but I wanted to know if there would be considered a conflict of interest with them discussing, voting, anything on this particular... And when I, when we say 2% out-of-town worker tax credit, I guess let me backtrack a little. That's on the agenda because there's talk about fire levy, that you wanted to do a piece of legislation stating that if, you know, the fire levy passes, then we will keep the tax credit as is for the term of the and fire and police levy, equipment levy, which is a five-year term. The thought being that if the out-of-town worker knew that this was passed, that they would be, hopefully, voting for the levy and encouraging other people to vote for the levy, because by voting for the levy, then this particular piece of legislation would say, hey, if it passes, then you're not going to, we're not gonna do away with the tax levy. I do have some problems with the piece of legislation, because we have pointed out that I mean, you can pass the piece of legislation, but I mean, we could turn right around and revoke it, if I... I, I just feel, and this is just me, and I probably would be the only one that would vote no on doing the piece of legislation, so my no wouldn't affect the outcome, because I'm pretty sure the majority of the committee or council's gonna say yes. I just hate to promise someone something, knowing full well that again, we could come back and, you know, revoke it. Now, I know, Chris, you made the comment, yeah, but if somebody did that, it's political suicide, they're not gonna be back next year. And, you know, that could very well be. And I know we can tell the public, we're passing this piece of legislation, and this is what it says, levy passes, and we want you to be out there voting for it, passes, you guys are free and clear for five years, we're not gonna come after you on the tax credit, we're not gonna take it away, and I'm rambling now, I've lost my total train of thought.
If I could jump in with you?
Sure, I can figure out what I wanted to say.
Yeah, so I, I don't like speaking for somebody else. If all seven of us come back, you know, in two years, then we would be speaking for this group of people. But if any of us, or none of us, come back in two years, I don't want to speak for the next, next group. I also don't like paying money to publish a resolution. I want, is there a way that we could just do a letter to the public and sign it? Because, you know, I'm okay going on the record and saying, you know, I'm fine with supporting this, because, you know, that tells you my intentions, without having to pass a piece of legislation that we have to pay to publish. Where, you know, we're asking for a levy because we're trying to be good with our city's finances, and then here we go wasting, you know, a couple hundred dollars to publish a piece of, you know, a piece of resolution that's really, again, like Vicky said, somebody could revoke it anyway. So for me, I'm comfortable saying that I have zero intentions or desires to even look at that out-of-town tax credit for the remainder of this term. And then if we all get re-elected in two years, or whomever is here, I think at the start of that term, that group of people should do the same thing, issue a statement immediately, and say, you know, we still don't wanna do this.
That's where I was headed with the two, you know, after we had several conversations with people, I think a letter would be better. That would give our attention, let everybody know that that would be our intent not to do anything with it.
Correct.
And whoever wants to sign it can sign it, or not sign it.
Yeah, because, and I think where that goes, Chris, is, let's just hypothetically say that we say we're gonna do it for five years, right? And in two years, there's a whole new gaggle of people up here, and they're like, yeah, no. So we just spent money to pass legislation, now they're gonna spend money to pass legislation revoking this legislation.
I'll file a letter.
So...
Well, I know at the last committee meeting, it was discussed that, or Mr. Gerder had stated that he could either prepare draft legislation or a proclamation, or a statement setting forth those facts.
What's the difference, in your opinion, between a proclamation and a statement?
Are they, are they the same thing legally speaking?
One starts with P and one starts with an F, yeah. Yeah, it's just...
Okay.
No, yeah, I mean, I can put something together on, Miranda, on City Council letterhead and send out a draft and you guys...
Yeah, and I think there's a committee working on the, you know, the PR and stuff for the levy, and I think whatever we do, a proclamation, a letter, whatever, could be utilized by that group then to, to make our intent and our stance very well known.
I can charge more for a proclamation than a statement.
Okay.
Just words.
Proclamation sounds much fancier.
Does, and so it sounds better.
Way fancier, yeah. Blow your brains out.
Yeah.
Be back on track now?
No, I...
Did I stall enough for you?
No. That, I forgot those, no. You know, you were talking about, the verbiage somewhat would be that if the levy passes, then the 2% out-of-town workers' tax credit, tax credit will remain, I mean, basically untouched during the levy term. Is that basically what you're saying? That if the levy passes, then the 2% out-of-town workers' tax credit will remain untouched by council during, you know, the levy term? I mean, in other words, we won't go, we won't take it away?
I think during our council term, during this council term, and I think the next council should be put on the spot to answer that same question. Because again, if we say for that five-year levy term, none of us may be here in those five years. I don't wanna speak for our future replacements.
Neither do I, I don't think we can.
But I do think that, yeah, and I think whether that's us or whether it's somebody else, they should be put on the spot immediately and asked the same question. So I'm not trying to dodge that, I'm trying to say that I don't wanna speak for somebody else.
Now, let me ask you this, because I'm not even sure, I'm trying to understand what I wrote. So what's the difference then, if we would say, rather than if the levy passes, we're not gonna go after your out-of-town tax credit? If we say if the levy does not pass, then the 2% out-of-town workers' tax credit... workers' tax credit will be revoked? Whether it's 2% or we say 1% or half a percent?
I don't want to go on the record and say that yet because, again, I don't know that we know the impact of that quite yet, you know, like we talked about the other night. We're still realizing what the other levy is doing as it's evening itself out. I think it's too soon at this moment to, to sign a number to say half of a percent, 1%, 2%. I just don't, to me, that's a threat, and I don't want to come out with a threat.
Okay, I'm just asking.
Yeah, I want, I want to come out and say, look, we really need this levy. If it, if it passes, here's what we're willing to do to make sure that your financial situation is, is the best it can be. You know?
Don't you think that's a bribe?
I don't think so, no.
No, it's not a bribe.
No, I think, I think it's stating our intentions. I mean, that's, that's how we, that's how we balance our budget.
Well, no, no, I mean, it's like, okay, now if you do this for me, then I'm going to do this for you. I mean, I don't know.
It's, it's, in my opinion, it's, it's what we're going to do for the city in the long run. If we don't get this done down the road, we're going to be, if it does bad, we're going to be really, really in a bad spot. And you know the numbers. Mr. White knows the numbers about levy versus raising taxes. You guys both know the numbers on that and really good, you probably have, stuck in your head, don't have to look it up. The levy's the best way to go for, if, if we're going to try to save our equipment. And whatever we can do to try to help that along, I don't think it's a bad thing.
I mean, don't get me wrong. I don't want to go after the out-of-town workers' tax credit. But by the same token, even though I can sit here and say, up 10 times, now remember, people, even though we're saying to you, we're not going to take it away, we may have to come back and take it away if our financial situation, if something would turn around. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, I do. Because we didn't know COVID was going to happen and change our finance. There's so many, there's so many unknowns out there. We'll get to public participation at the end. So we don't, we don't know what the future holds.
Yeah.
But I think it's still fair to state what our intentions are. And I don't feel it's a bribe, to use your words, because, hear me out. I'm asking you to pass this levy and telling you that I'm going to be the best steward of your money as I can be. Isn't that also a bribe then? I'm saying, I'm saying if you do this for me, here's what I'm going to do for you.
Okay.
I, I think it's the same thing. I think we're stating our, our objectives are, you know, what, what we intend to do, our intentions. I think that if we can pass this, it's going to solidify our financial situation that we, that we were trying to avoid, and we can move on.
Okay. I got you.
Yeah. To build over, that's our job up here is to do the, our best intentions, what we can do with our money. I mean, I think that's part of it.
Well, you know that. And I know that. But, you know, then you've got those that, no, that's not what you said, and it's like, yes, that's what I said.
That's why I like doing a proclamation.
Okay.
Or a letter. Because we, we do get put on the record a little bit with that. And it is, it can be used both ways. It can be used to hold us accountable, but can also be used to inform people. Because, you know, when you go to the polls, you're going to make an informed decision. There's people out there, they're going to vote yes. There's people out there, they're going to vote no. We know this. Some of the people haven't made their minds up yet. And I think if you're giving them the most information, hey, if I choose to, to spend this kind of money out of my pocket to help the city, this part of it, they're not going to ask for this as well at the same time.
How soon can one start voting? I mean, when do the polls?
October 8th.
October 8th. I had news.
Okay. I, I'm just thinking, probably, I mean, if we're going to do something, we need to move so that...
There's a group that's already been meeting as a levy campaign.
Yeah, but I mean, as far as this proclamation or...
I think Mr. Gerner can probably have that ready for us, maybe even by Monday if we're lucky.
Just for clarity's sake, I wanted to add that I know we keep talking about a 2% credit. I don't believe out-of-town workers get a full 2% credit. I think it's like 1.88.
Oh, excuse me?
Because of the new levy.
Because of the levy, yeah.
Yeah, it equates to their former 2%.
Yeah, so I don't want anyone out there watching, if we have to change the number, the proclamation states something different than what we've discussed in...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So then that means at our next council meeting, I'm going to have to amend that referral, which was 2%? Now, Kaylee, you should have...
I know.
...that Tuesday night. No, I'm teasing. Okay, no big deal. The only thing is, we're sitting here talking about it.
I mean, it gives notice that that's what it is.
I'll be willing to sign it if it's only for our term.
Correct.
If it leads over to the next term, I'm not trying to put any restrictions on the next...
I agree.
...people.
We can't anyway.
But...
I mean, we could, but it's, it's not binding.
On the other hand, if it comes up next year, I will not vote to take away...
Correct.
...anything.
Yep.
Even if it comes up in legislation, it's not going to happen for me.
Anything else from you?
Nope.
I'm done, dude.
Okay, I'm fine.
All right.
I hope you noticed that. Mr. Gerner. Carolyn Shireman, 1065 East Bill Avenue. Vicky, I'm, I'm going to agree with you. I believe that it's like a pressure, okay, you do this five years, so we have another year and a half to go, and then a new term comes on, possibly new people. I hope for one that I'm back here, quite sure that I will be. But that means that I'm already having to do something that the previous council, which I was on, is asking me to do, whether I want to do it or not. And, and I feel like if you don't vote for the levy, then we're cutting your 2% tax.
Nobody has said that.
But that's what it feels like.
Nobody has said that.
I wasn't talking to you, Mr. Myers.
This is my committee.
I know, but I'm not talking to you yet.
I'm about to ask you to sit down.
Okay, well, I'll sit down, but you're wrong again.
Thank you. Any other public participation?
Okay, we got you.
Lynda Cooper, I D 169 Shell. I'll, I'll be the devil's advocate here. I was sitting at home watching this, and I ran up here, so I'm low on breath. Not literally ran, but anyhow, you're going to do this proclamation as a favor to these 1,700 citizens of Biscars. What about the disabled and those that are on fixed incomes that really can't afford the property tax? Are you going to promise them they don't have to pay that too?
That's up to the county, not us.
You know what I'm saying? You know what I'm saying? I think you're opening a can of worms here by promising this group something because everything you do affects some group. So the next group that gets affected by the next thing you try to do, if they come up here and are loud enough, are you going to promise them and cave to them? That's just my opinion.
Thank you for that.
Sure.
Yes, thank you.
Greg White, 1125 Hill Chris Drive. Your, your proclamation, you can do whatever you want to do. You can write a letter. I mean, I mean, you know, you guys have agreed pretty much that you're not going to touch it, but the only thing is, it's no guarantee whatsoever to the people of Biscars that, you know, that are on fixed incomes, like this lady just said, disabilities, Social Security. They can't afford this property tax. 1,770 people that live in Biscars that commute outside this city because there is no jobs, no industry, no nothing in this town, that they have to do that to take care of their families. Okay? So I told Chris earlier when he told me about this, I said it's not even worth the ink to write on. Okay? Pretty much. Because you're correct, Mr. Myers. Who's to say that, you know, the next council or whatever decides to take it away? Okay? You know, far be it from whatever they want to do. But the thing is, is I understand there's a need, but I'm also going back on the record what you said. Well, they, they want a million-dollar truck, but they don't want all those bells and whistles. Okay? Well, you can buy a plane-draging fire truck, which might piss some people off, but whatever, for under half a million dollars. Okay? It puts the white stuff on the red stuff. Okay? It doesn't have to have all this crapola on it. Okay? A lot of volunteer fire departments in the surrounding community around Biscars can't afford a million-dollar fire truck. Okay? So they do what, what they can with what they have. Okay? Some of the other things, I mean, I understand the police need some new cruisers. That's why I said at the beginning, and on the record, that this needed to be two separate levies, one for the police, one for the fire. Okay? Because I think that money has need to be watched what is spent. Okay? I looked at the figures, and it was discussed in many open discussions that the fire department wants a $336,000 ambulance. Okay? You can take both of those units that they have, buy a new chassis, and have them remounted down here in five places here in the state of Ohio for about $140,000, $150,000 apiece. So you don't need a $336,000 medic unit, squad, ambulance, whatever you want to call it, when you can take those two and rehab them to where you have two new vehicles. Okay? It's just like in the past. The past administration didn't put in the budgets, and it's not your guys' fault. I'm not accusing any of you of anything. But it's the past administration's fault for not putting aside like it was meant to be six years ago when they said they were going to buy two police cars, at least one or two per year. Mr. Myers, you're aware, aware of that because I went back and watched some video. Okay? It was openly discussed. It never happened. Okay? Never happened whatsoever.
And my biggest thing with that was when, when I first got on council, I was dumbfounded to see that we were setting money aside for garbage trucks in the budget every year.
Yeah.
But that was it.
And but then they took it away.
Took half of it away.
Took it?
Because that fund had grown so large.
But it didn't matter. It was only costing people a dollar a month.
Yeah. Oh, I get that.
Okay. A dollar a month for, to make sure that our trash collectors had a decent truck to pick up the trash...
Yeah.
...from every resident in City Biscars.
We had top-of-the-line garbage trucks while our police were driving around with whole floor air.
Okay. What happened? Costs went up. That money was earmarked in that, in that budget line so that it would never be touched. But former council and former administration chunked that down, and now we had to re-race it again. But my question is, why wasn't, and like I said, you were on there, and nobody else was, and, and then Aaron was on there, that why didn't they buy police cruisers back then when they were almost like, what, $16,000, $17,000, $18,000 cheaper? And they could have bought one a year instead of doing other stuff with city money? What I always tell people, and people have called me on this, and I tell them, I said, when you go to the vote, your voting place, and you go ahead and put the card in the machine, that's between you and that machine and nobody else. You know? I tell people all the time, that's your God-given right under the amendments of the Constitution. Okay? But I still can't understand, you know, you guys are wanting to make this. I appreciate that. But in next council, they could come in and just say, to hell with you people, and take it away. So I'm hoping people vote what they think they can afford and what they think might get taken away from. That's the way they should vote. Thank you.
Greg, if I may ask you a question?
Sure.
Am I understanding then, because I thought originally you were the one that wanted something...
We didn't, but we couldn't get it into the legislation.
Okay.
As Mr. Gerner pointed out in several meetings, and it's all on tape.
Oh, yeah.
Okay? He said we could not write that in because it would be kicked out by the...
Not the original legislation.
Into, right.
Original legislation. It could not be put in there because it would got kicked out.
There's only certain statutory language.
Because that's what we originally wanted.
But that was in the legislation to have the levy put on the ballot?
Correct. But we wanted that ballot language put in there, but according to Mr. Gerner...
It's not allowable.
It was not allowed.
And I know that.
Okay. So basically, that changed the whole avenue of everything. Okay? With a lot of people.